Well, it's pretty good. But anyway.
How long?
That is actually. The street goes on way through.
I don't want to snipe.
But anyway.
I'm going to call up here for Tim Brother. Good?
Well.
Are you working? I bet you are. Yeah.
I'm happy.
He said no.
Yep.
I like your haircut. You, are you talking to me? Yeah. Thank you. I'll forget. Oh, I forgot. Started that. That's good.
It's a cute orange. I've got a conversion.
Right. Thank you. Yes, congratulations.
Good evening, everyone. It is June twenty-third, sixteen. Calling the meeting door. Everyone rise, we will pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so you are good to go. Uh, roll call, we are all here this evening, so I'll need a motion and a second to adopt tonight's agenda. I'll make a motion. Second. Any questions on tonight's agenda? Any additions or?
I have none.
Okay. All in favor of adopting tonight's agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All right, uh, onto the consent agenda. I'll need a motion and a second on that, please.
I made the motion and accept the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Any questions on the consent agenda tonight? All in favor of adopting consent agenda as is, say aye.
Aye.
All right, uh, public forum is next, and Kevin, I have your secret.
I just wanted to let everyone know that, um, I was able to pick up a donation from Living Trail, a greenhouse today for Cherry Hill Park, so just wanted to publicly thank them for that donation. So maybe the sort of perennials, um, just sort of carrying the color after July's are done now, just again, enter when that's, um, just kind of stop wanting to see the park and enjoying that too. So it's good. Just wanted to acknowledge that donation.
Thank you very much, Kevin. Thank you. Anybody else I could say? Okay. We will move on to old business. Uh, first on old business is approve, uh, recommended potential bid for the City Hall roof project. Tim?
Yeah, I'm gonna make the motion and we, uh, approve, uh, recommendation on B.L. Dawson to be the, uh, to perform the roof work here at the municipal building.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Carol, any questions on our bid?
Would you like me to watch?
Oh, yeah, why don't you go first?
Maybe, maybe I'll save some questions or clarify some things. Um, so we had, uh, the bid opening on Friday, the fourteenth, or I'm sorry, the twentieth. Um, I'm on, still on vacation mode, so I apologize for that. Uh, bid open, uh, was last Friday, and, um, we had four, um, bids that we received. Um, they were all, um, compliant with the Dawson specification, so we had no requested alternate proposals. Um, so of the four bids, um, B.L. Dawson was low at three hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars. Peterson Brothers, um, was second low at three hundred and forty-six thousand, one hundred. Uh, Palmer West was third low, three hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars even, and Burwell Roofing came in at three hundred and eighty-three thousand, three hundred. All four firms, um, that were wholly compliant with what was specified, um, B.L. Dawson being the low bid, um, were recommending we move forward with that. Um, the unit pricing was pretty close, wouldn't make a sizable difference, um, if we run into this, but the wet insulation, um, is linear for it to correct. Um, and debt replacement, which we assume we're not gonna have any, but we wanted to make sure, um, that's the metal roofing that's above this ceiling, but below roof, um, proper. Um, we have that unit price as well. Those unit pricing, if they find any issues with that, um, they're required to contact Garland, um, provide them photos, and have a brief discussion about it, because we don't wanna hold up any work, but we want it to be documented. Um, Garland will approve that, and then the contractor will be able to forward it there. Um, just on the off case that, uh, you know, it's a different time of day when they're up here inspecting the work. Um, we, uh, re- uh, were recommending, uh, including a forty thousand dollar, um, contingency, just to cover those items and anything else that might come up. Again, those are gonna have to be documented and requested. Uh, if there's a change order, those will be documented, uh, in requests and signed up on. Um, what else can we talk about? Oh, the, um, because they're going to be replacing the flashing on the roof, that's the metal edge that goes around the perimeter of that re-roof elevation, um, we're recommending that we also, um, approve to do those little, um, canopy areas, one over the fire hall door, one over, uh, the main door coming in here, so all the colors will match. Um, it's not recommended that we need it, um, and it would probably cost almost as much to do that, but, um, not a, not a good idea to do that. Um, and I think that was it for the roof. If I remember correctly. Yeah, and we're putting in a twenty thousand dollar placeholder just for those awnings. Garland is contacting B.L. Dawson, and he's gonna give a formal proposal on that. Um, but, uh, we're recommending that we approve three hundred and eighty-five thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars for this work. So it's this base bid, plus the forty thousand contingency, plus the twenty thousand to, um, replace, uh, the metal roofing, if you will. It also includes the, um, the socket under the canopy. We noticed after the rain now that there's been leaking there too, so you can see little dirt marks underneath, uh, underneath the canopy, so.
Anything else to add, Robert?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that this process was fair. Um, we did have people who showed up at, um, the pre-bid meeting who were not, um, Garland contractors, and for whatever reason, they did not bid, and since they didn't bid, um, they could not, you know, and we needed to get a roof done, um, we just couldn't consider anything from them. So, um, the process was truly fair, and so, um, and I, and Tim went on his way to make that happen, and I really appreciate what you did there, Tim. Um, and so the process was fair. Um, this bid is, you know, in line, um, with some other bids that I had heard normally. One of the gentlemen that I spoke to, who has a roofing company, said that we're probably talking between two seventy-five and three twenty-five for the roof based on a built-up roof like Garland's. And so, we got, you know, to have a bid come in at three twenty-five, I was very encouraged. I also was very encouraged that there were a lot of people here at the pre-bid meeting. They heard about it, they, they came, but some of them just decided not to bid. If you decide not to bid, you don't get the job, so, um, and there were some that, who were here that could have bid and didn't, um, people that I talked to. So, um, the, the process was fair, and I think we got a really good deal based on this roof, which, we're hoping will last us fifteen years. So I'll be long gone when this roof needs to be replaced. So, that's all I wanted to say about that, because if you recall, I didn't want to overpay for the roof, and, um, the roof that we're putting on is a good roof. If you see the material, you're gonna say, yeah, it won't, this thing will not leak. So, I'm, um, to work together with him on this was, um, really good for me, and it's good for the city. So, three hundred and twenty-five thousand for the roof. We have some extras that we're providing for, um, with the contingency, so we're gonna be at three eighty-something. Um, it's, it's what we need to do to keep this place watertight and weather tight.
Thank you. Thank you, Robert. Carol, any questions?
Um, just if you can clarify for me, so I know that Garland had their roof. So is this their roof, or is this, you know?
Yes. Good question. Yep, so all four of the people, firms, that, um, submitted a proposal, bid, are using the, um, Garland product.
Okay.
Um, we didn't receive any that requested as equal, um, and there were, I don't know, three firms.
There were three firms there.
So they, they chose for whatever reason not, not to sign the proposals.
And then Garland will be, um, the general contractor, but they will be supervising it?
Yeah, they'll be project manager, good job. Yep, yep, they will be here regularly throughout the project. Um, they're, they'll be putting, um, an actual contract together with Dawson that, um, either the mayor or our clerk or both will sign off on. I'm not sure what the public word called is, but, um, once approved tonight, they'll, um, provide a draft contract that we'll send to Fritz, um, have him review, make sure, um, it's in keeping with what, what we desire, um, this type of contractor, um, and what we want. They're looking at a, I guess it's a September-ish timeframe.
Yeah.
So we'll get through the, the summer months until the fall.
And it doesn't matter, but where are they from?
Metro area. I'm not sure exactly where they are. They're well-known for, um, all, all these generally.
I think they hail from State Farm.
Oh, I think it looks good. Really appreciate the work that you've done on this. I don't, I don't have anything to add. I got approached, and I was told there was thirty people here at the pre-bid meeting when I was at B.L. A.A., and I was like, wow, there's a lot of people up there. Um, so thank you guys for doing that, putting us together so we have a breakdown. Um, it'd be so nice to have this all. Thank you, Robert. Chris?
I'm just curious. For purposes which is painful, why didn't we, um, B.L. Dawson is being, would be accepted as a bid by you as both the lowest and the lowest qualified bidder?
Correct.
Just saying that in record, and I think it's obvious to everybody, but, um...
Thank you for that. Okay. Any other questions, or anything you wanna add? Any else? Okay. Uh, well, let's go ahead and approve moving forward with B.L. Dawson, the lowest qualified bidder that we've received. We'll go ahead and vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on.
Can I just say one more thing?
Yeah, please.
I'd just like to thank Sherry for coordinating all the, you know, the pre-bid meeting, the bid open, uh, meeting this afternoon, and we reviewed the bids, I just wanna say thank you.
Uh, number two, uh, on the old business is Resolution twenty-five dash zero six dash zero two. I'll need a motion and a second to open up and discuss that. Can I make a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And I'm going to, uh, this is just basically what this resolution is, allowing us to, um, get the general obligation bond to move forward, so we can get the reimbursement, um, and get that funds back. Um, we're going to, uh, provide issuance and sale up to sixteen hundred, uh, sixteen hundred, one thousand, or one million, six hundred thousand, I wish it was lower, um, general obligation capital improvement and equity bond. Um, so we can go ahead and discuss that on the sheet itself. I think he had, Nick had a bunch of information on there, um, showing fifteen years, twenty years. And so I guess, do we vote on what we wanna do for time now too, or are we just, because I know we're not getting, the funding won't come until soon. It's in August, August is what Michelle told me today. Um, the funding won't be here until August, but we need to approve this so we can move forward with it. So I guess today we gotta decide if we want a fifteen or twenty year, and Nick and others will go ahead and work with that. Tim, do you have any questions or anything you wanna add, or...
Well, I can add, I, I went through the documents, and I put together a little spreadsheet just comparing the two. Um, and I just did it today, so I apologize, we're not kidding it out to everyone. Um, but I did it to see what the, the annual impact would be, so I used their, um, one point oh five percent W recommendation on how we put budget for it annually. And, um, the, I'm gonna use some averages, um, but, uh, well, maybe I'll start with just going through the fifteen year. So it ranges from a hundred and thirty-two thousand and seven a year to a hundred and high of a hundred and sixty something, and, um, it's quite a bit higher, as you would expect, than the twenty-year debt service. Um, that has a low of somewhere around one twenty-two and a high of one forty. So, you know, there's quite a discrepancy. There's about a twenty thousand dollar a year on average variance between the fifteen and the twenty, and in our budget, twenty thousand is quite a bit. Um, and, uh, I think I can say this from the, the two finance coal leads that we're gonna recommend during the twenty-year debt service. The fire truck can't go over, I don't know what it was, nineteen years or nineteen point whatever years, because the max is twenty year. So that's factored into here already, um, and the roof, um, will certainly have probably at least a double life expectancy of this bond, so I, I, I don't think that it's necessary to try to ratchet that back, because our roof will outlive this bond, and I think that's the correct way to do it. Um, the fire truck hopefully does too. Um, so, uh, you know, we'll pay more in financing during the twenty years versus fifteen, but I think from, uh, you know, impact on our taxpayers, I think it would be responsible to go with the twenty-year debt service instead of the, the fifteen year.
I'd like to say that I wholeheartedly, um, agree with what Councilman Groves just said, that the twenty thousand or more impact per year, um, that would be on the residents of Harris Falls, um, if we go to fifteen year, is probably too much. Um, so we'd rather spread it out, go to twenty years, and, um, keep that twenty thousand off of their residents so that we don't have to do huge annual increases. They've already seen quite a bit of that, and so, um, let's try to keep that from happening again by going to twenty years.
Sure.
Yeah, um, I would agree that, I, I appreciate your comments about that we do want to be mindful of the residents and what they are already, you know, so I would agree with the twenty year, which is a lower.
Pete?
Yeah, same here, I agree with the twenty year. Is there any penalty for early payment? That I don't know.
Okay. I know we asked Nick, and I think, what, when we pick it, we have to pay the set amount, we can't pay...
No.
Unfortunately.
Okay.
Because I thought it was strange, and you have to repay the bond.
Right.
But I think that's just a duty of our, of our father.
Oh, if I cashed in the bond early, I would pay it back.
Yeah.
It's a long time ago, I tell you.
Yeah.
So it makes sense.
Okay, sure. So we're looking at a little over two hundred thousand in interest difference.
Uh, almost three, at least by my calculation, and I did it pretty quickly today, but, uh, I got two ninety-six.
I just look at this one, it's a six oh four eighty-one for the fifteen year, and eight seventy-nine, nine seventy-seven for the twenty year.
Okay, I would trust that, yeah. Now, we do have some debt that'll be retiring, um, over the next two years. Um, so somewhere in our budget, um, in the coming years, with the twenty year loan, there's a, again, I'm working in averages, so don't take this one to the bank, but we'll have to fund a bulge fifty thousand dollars more in additional payments to compensate for this loan once our other ones, um, mature.
I don't have the other ones in front of me, do you recall if they were twenty years or...
Um, boy, I don't know. I don't remember. I might have it open here, um, I mean, I don't. Um, the one was the water fund, and that was fifteen thousand dollars, and then the other one was...
City Hall.
This building. Yeah, that one is twenty. But I think we levy for that, the last one we levy for that is twenty-seven. So I, there's one year that we'll have a, a double, this is twenty-sixth, the first year, we're making interest on it. And I think we had talked about making that out of our capital fund. Just something to consider when we budget.
Okay. Well, thank you for, you know, explaining that. Appreciate it. Uh, any other questions on, are twenty or fifteen here? Any questions out here? All right, well, let's go ahead and move forward with approving Resolution twenty-five dash zero six dash zero two, uh, with the, uh, up to one point six million general obligation capital improvement bond, um, using the twenty year return.
Yes.
All in favor of using that, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, on the new business, uh, first on the new business is Resolution twenty-five dash zero six dash zero one, and that's determining the selection process of the cannabis retail registration applicant to receive the one city cannabis retail registration allowed within the city. Now, let's, please, explain it quick if you want.
Sure. Essentially, when the city has only, has a limited amount of registrations available for the cannabis, um, license for retail, the city has the jurisdiction to determine how that, how those applicants are decided. So, I think we've had a lot of meetings, you know, throughout the commissions and council, everybody's in agreement, the intent is for that one license to go to the existing cannabis business downtown Buck Duncan, but we haven't put that on paper yet. So this resolution is just a formal, uh, decision supporting, you know, why we are supporting Buck getting the license, so, um, yeah.
I'll need a motion and a second for Council to discuss.
I have it, I can read it.
Okay.
I move to approve Resolution twenty-five dash zero six dash zero one, determining the selection process of the cannabis retail registration applicant to receive the one city cannabis retail registration allowed within the city, reserving the one available cannabis business retail registration slash license to Buck Duncan at three six six Bench Street.
Second. Any questions on, Carol, this day? Any questions on this resolution?
No.
Pete?
No.
Eric?
Good.
Tim?
Looks good.
Chris? Anything you wanna add?
You're being very transparent, which is a very good thing.
I just have something to add for the public, in case you don't have the resolution in front of you. In the event that Buck withdraws his request for the city, um, registration, um, then Council will establish a merit system, in the event of multiple cannabis registration applicants there. Good.
Thank you. All right, so we go ahead and then vote then on Resolution twenty-five dash zero six dash zero one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Moving on to, uh, the second on new business is to approve the cannabis business retail registration for Buck Duncan, the bridge at three six six Bench Street for cannabis micro business. And I'll make the motion on that. Do I have a second?
A second.
Tim, do you have any discussion you'd like to? Um, I suppose I should play it.
Oh, so, after I wrote that last resolution, we kinda discovered that, um, the timing's right for him to bring his, um, application to Council, so it may seem a little redundant, but, you know, just in case, we wanna make sure we're double-covered, um, with the resolution as well as the comfortable registration itself. So, um, this is the registration where we need to, to, to report to the Office of Cannabis Management that he's got.
So I'm gonna restate the motion. I move to approve Buck Duncan's cannabis business retail registration application contingent upon the Office of Cannabis Management's final license approval.
Do I have a second? No, we clearly did the second, but it's not going to happen.
I can second again.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, Carol?
No.
Hey Buck, I have a question for you.
Yeah.
When are we expecting business to open, the new business to open?
Yeah, so, um, with this retail registration, the state's kind of shifted. That was something that I couldn't do until actually everything was done and finalized, and they've now changed it, so once you have pre-approval, you can do this, and that gives you this ninety-day window, basically, so... I'm looking at hopefully by the end of July to kind of be ready for them to do their inspection, and then it's just, they get to, I think, I don't know how many days they have to do it, thirty or something, like they can come and do it, so hopefully in the next, yeah, sixty to ninety days, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right. Any other questions? Prince, anything to add? All right, well, um, we will go ahead and, uh, vote on approving cannabis retail registration for Buck Duncan at the bridge. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Number three on the list tonight is develop expense limit policy for city commissions. Sherry, if you wanna fill us in on...
Yeah, I could. Great. We just had a situation come up, um, last week, and we weren't quite sure, um, the rules, or where we could find them, uh, with commissions, um, there was appreciation dinner given, um, for the cap committee, and, um, they, they provided food and from the EDC that they sponsored it. Me, in the on...
When are we expecting business to open, the new business to open?
Yeah, so, um, with this retail registration, the state's kind of shifted. That was something that I couldn't do until actually everything was done and finalized, and they've now changed it, so once you have pre-approval, you can do this, and that gives you this ninety-day window, basically, so. I'm looking at hopefully by the end of July to kind of be ready for them to do their inspection, and then it's just, they get to, I think, I don't know how many days they have to do it, thirty or something, that they can come and do it, so hopefully in the next, yeah, sixty to ninety days, yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Any other questions? Fritz, anything to add? All right. Well, um, we will go ahead and vote on approving cannabis retail registration for Buck Duncan at the bridge. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Number three on the list tonight is develop expense limit policy for city commissions. Sherry, if you want to fill us in on it.
Yeah, could I have? Uh, we just had a situation come up, um, last week, and we weren't quite sure, um, the rules, or we could find them, uh, with commissions, um, there was appreciation dinner given, um, for the cap committee, and, um, they provided food and from the EDC that they sponsored it. We, in the office, didn't know what the rule was on that, if the EDC could just request it, with something like that, we need to come prior, um, like it had enough to amount of money, or, you know, what is the process? So, according to what we have in the office, we need to develop something, unless someone knows of what the exact rules are.
I don't. They have a fifteen hundred dollar limit for staff, correct?
I would not recommend that.
No, no, I wouldn't either, just for background.
Yeah, right. So I just wanted to bring this up as a point that we need to discuss, and figure out if this, you know, what things going forward, um, this wasn't an unexpected thing, a good thing, um, but again, we need to, uh, develop policy.
Well, I think back, Kevin's brought everything here, and that's from the parks.
Culture.
I don't know if that's correct either, but just again, for background, um, I think, uh, Parks also brought their, um, improvement plan for the, um, kiosk downtown here for football. I can't think of any other commission expenses, but, um, the HPC came and we, well, we have a, did we approve their?
Yeah.
We did approve that.
We gave a dollar, but they could spend it, and they can't afford it, so.
That's just what that budget, that actual normal spending.
That's what I was wondering.
I thought we gave them.
So maybe if I see it, you've thought about a little more than, um.
Can I ask how much it was?
I do not know, Michelle passed that, it wasn't, I mean, it wasn't even above a hundred dollars, because some people donated. Some, um, it wasn't a high expense, it just was a question of the process.
The EDC's got a lot of projects coming up, and I'm sure they're going to be spending money, so. Is it a downwind of the projects, Bob?
They have a lot of projects that they're working on, they need to give food, and I've been telling them that they can't just work themselves, they have to come to the city council, and it will, so. And I'll have a conversation with, um, both Peter and his co-chair, and make sure that they understand that.
So that's something to talk about?
I think so.
Yes.
Good, I mean, one thing they want to or should know is what their budget situation is to sell as a liaison to.
Yes, for them, yes. So I think they know, they're pretty keenly aware of how much money they have. I think that anytime they spend money, any of their commissions, they need to bring it to the council. So, and the reason I say that is, otherwise money's going to leak out here, two hundred dollars at a time, and, and let's face it, we're not in a position to give out two hundred dollars at a time, we're just, we need, it's not our money, it's the residents on the, we need to have permission to use it, and they need to know that we are telling people that they can use it for whatever use, so, um, my gut is, we just, we need to let them know, that if they're going to spend money, they need that permission, so. And that's why two cents.
Well, and to me, it seems logical, a commission is appointed under the authorization of the council, and, and so there needs to be kind of that, I don't know, it's not a check and balance, but, uh, because the, the council needs to know what the commission is doing, and it's, um, I mean, it's not like they're asking permission, but informing, maybe that's the most important thing, that, that we know, you know, the direction that they're going with.
They're not employers, don't they?
Right.
Yeah, I agree, um, I was getting phone calls asking if it was okay if they own a grocery shop, and, um, I, I can't do that for everybody, um, I don't think that was ever done by us, so I think, um, calling me for, I guarantee this should never happen, I mean, I, if, if somebody wants to do, I, I, I also gave the suggestion of, for something small like that, run through Sherry if we don't have any meetings. Um, I know it was under two hundred, but I don't care, I don't want to make that decision on my shoulders, so, I mean, I still think they should come through here, we shouldn't have a surprise, you know, surprise expense, um. And, and I know most of the, like, really, the higher commissions knows that, so, I think this was just really exciting, and it came out on them, and unfortunately couldn't wait, or we didn't get it on them, so. I think all commissions have to go through us, and plan in advance.
Well, I'll send our, my, to the commissions and the liaisons to also liberate that.
All right, and just for clarification, the library is a board, not a commission, they can make their own decisions. So just so everybody's aware of that.
And, and just a question, so when I was on the HPC, and I think it's still true, they have a conference, they get authorized to go to the conference, but, like I remember when we went, we would have additional expenditures, so we didn't get approval for a specific amount until we were back.
Sure, that makes sense, I mean, we kind of know what that conference costs every year, so we've worked with them to give the grant to pay half, and then cover the other half, so we've kind of gotten that down, um, and then who knows what hotels? I mean, at least we know they're going, and we know there's an expense coming, yeah, I, I agree on that, I think that's fair. As long as we know ahead of time, and we, we, as a council, didn't know that they were, we didn't have a chance to even talk about the community center, which, and the grants meeting thing is wonderful, but, you know. It could have been expensive, but we catered it in, it could have been about five hundred dollars, I mean, I know, so, I mean, I know they're very good at spending the money, watching it, I know that, but you're right, we couldn't do that, I think it's impossible, unless we, you know what really good thing? Now you bring that up, we have, the, uh, the office has a debit card, so maybe moving forward, we should look at changing if there's an overnight stay, we book it, so we don't have to reimburse, and then make a controlled cost of the hotel. Now, we're not going to put it in that, we put it in the conference hotel, but maybe.
Then we have per diem policies, they got it, so.
And then we can share the, yeah, travel expenses, so.
I think we do that, I assume.
Commission, inspections. And this was for, to recognize the cap?
Yes.
So, again, I think, you know, I'll, I'll say shame on me, but that really should have come from the city, not the EDC. Because it was more than the EDC.
Yeah.
So we should have probably talked about that here, to begin with, and, um.
Yep.
Agreed to fund and, and organize that.
So, the leadership of the EDC, Peter and Molly, Peter's the chair, Molly is the co-chair, um, they, I think this was fairly spur of the moment idea, it happened like a week before, um, I'm, I'm just trying to remember, they put out a, an invite, like a week before it was going to happen, and, um, and, I was there, there were a lot, a lot of people there from the cap, but, um, if, no one thought of bringing it to the council. I mean, it, it would have been the best thing to do, bring it to the council, so that we would have an idea, the council could have come. Carol was there too, obviously, um, but it would have been interesting to have us all there, and then maybe talk even about what the future is, and, you know, even brainstorm a little of, uh, what, what can we do in one year? What can we do in three years? What can we do in five years in terms of the future? You know, that type of thing, um, right, and what's going to take longer than that, and then just concentrate on those things, but, um, the, the EDC is so excited about all the things that are happening, that they just thought, okay, let's do this, let's get, let's start something, and so, that's what happened, and it's, it kind of got, um, out there, and, um, I didn't slow them down, and I should have, because it actually happened on a, um, on a national holiday. It happened on Juneteenth, last Thursday, which was a national holiday, and we couldn't do any official business there because of that, and because there wasn't enough notice, so we had all kinds of stuff going there that just was not right, and so we had to kind of slow the, the truck down a little bit, and so, and, um, I'm going to have a conversation with them about that. So, and, and make sure that they understand that everything has to be approved by the council before they start spending money, before they, um, because, uh, I think it would have been great if other council people had been there, and that the notice included everything they needed to, to be included, so that, um, uh, we could, you know, not violate the open meeting law, so.
I think, sending an email, I think I've only got it through council, not calling, call the liaison or talk to the liaison, because it could get out of hand, and get out of the job. Okay. All right.
What?
Questions? Yeah.
Was it posted, that meeting, that dinner, that gathering, all the ideas, all the discussions, was posted?
I'm not so sure what.
It was just, I got an email invite at the last moment, um, I don't know how it was handled, I, I received an email, but I don't know, but there were no forums of anything, right? And I posted.
No, there was no forum.
I posted.
There was no forum?
Uh, was it?
I didn't know, there was only two.
It was.
There was only two of us.
No, I mean, of the EDC.
There was a forum, the EDC, but because it was a federal holiday, we could not transact business.
So Sherry said the forum was posted, the EDC forum was posted for?
Well, the mission, yeah, in case.
The council.
So they come, yeah. Yes.
Oh, you did, you posted it.
In case some.
Good, thank you.
Let's make it.
So we had the, the forum per shovred, but we couldn't do city business because of the holiday.
No, but you're trying to get us to draw.
No, never. You guys do a good job of that all by yourselves.
Anything else, any other comments on that? Fritz, you have any, yeah?
Nope.
We'll move on to number four, new business, um, something that's going to be kind of hard to do, a lot of discussion on it, approving Sherry Thompson, as a full-time permanent employee, so.
Take your time, assistant.
I have a deeper counsel, please.
So I'll make a motion in a second, so we can move her into full-time status.
I'll make a motion to approve Sherry Thompson as a full-time permanent employee.
A second.
Anything to add?
Um, just that we held a review, um, it was a very positive review, um, had a lot of discussion, um, and, I, just overall, I think, performance exceeded its standard, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You?
All right, Fritz, you want to say more than I, how you think Sherry's doing?
I think you made a very good choice. So the reason we're, we're doing this formally here is two-fold, one, we've had the review, our annual review, and secondly, Sherry's moving from a, um, now, probationary employees, sorry, uh, to permanent full-time now. So she's off the probationary period now, and she's a full-time permanent employee, so.
That's a one-year probation, right?
It was, yep. Held her review a little late, she hung in there for us.
All right, well, let's go ahead and approve Sherry, uh, to become a permanent full-time employee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right. Can't feel like probation.
All right, our next meeting is July fourteenth, just a reminder, council, I will not be here, I will be in Texas. Anything to add with the liaison side?
Uh, from a public works perspective, um, I don't know when it was, what meeting it was, was our first meeting in June, or, or one of the meetings in May, but we approved, uh, some emergency work on station number one. While they've gone through and they have, um, assessed that there are some deeper issues with that, and they're making a recommendation, and, um, they're coming back, they, it's urgent enough, we may want to just move forward with the repairs, but we won't know that until, for council, we're going to have to just let them kind of go with it. Controls, uh, the controls are, are bad, they need to be replaced, as long as they're doing that, they're going to be located in that white area, so that hopefully will prevent something like this from happening, and they've done it quite well, but, um, they're original.
Are they?
Yeah, so, like back in the eighties. In retrospect, it probably isn't the best place to have the electrical controls in that white area, so they're moving into the generator room. So, um, I can't even give you an estimated number on it, uh, it just has to be done, so they're working with their contractor and, uh, getting it all coordinated right now, so, getting quote, they will have to come back at a later date and approve it after the fact, considered an emergency situation. We still have one pump running, so it's not like we're in a full failure mode, um, but right now, if that one pump went down, we'd be in trouble, so.
Yeah, yeah, but it had a big voltage surge, it was, so.
And Kevin has the authority to make it.
Emergency hours, right? Generally speaking, what we asked him to do is contact one of the liaison, and just make sure that they're aware, and that they're approving on this direction, how many's going, and I think we talked about it already.
Yeah.
So, we're both, I, I.
Okay. Thank you, is, do you have anything else?
Yes. I don't, um, but just to update, um, the siren, so, I, I just contacted Kevin to say, is it fixed now? And he said, yes, the parts came in, he fixed it, but it was after the June monthly test, so he'll have to wait till, till July. So everybody's been listening for July to see if the sirens work that day.
All right, thank you.
I have a question for Fritz, if, if you would say anything, I see there's a case file out there for the city versus Springs Inn, can you say anything about it?
Sure, we are waiting for a hearing date, there was no response, and so, we're going to be proceeding as if it's a default, but, uh, I was hoping that, Sherry was really meaning it pretty hard, so hoping to have a, a date for you, but by tomorrow, I'm expected to be back in the court, we have that date.
Will that be in the case file, then?
Oh, yeah, if you're, if you're talking about seeing it online, oh, yeah, we'll see it.
And my formal response, or my response, I mean, like, the formal response to the letter that we sent him, however, like, eight, minutes ago, right?
Well, I, you're talking about the court file, right?
Yeah.
Well, anything anybody can say about it would be good, but I'm specifically asking about the court file.
We filed, and in addition to that, we did an affidavit, um, no response, which is kind of a prerequisite, and again, contacted the judge's clerk, and she's supposed to be back, and I think on his, his schedule, so that's what we're going to do. And then we'll file some additional paperwork, with a proposed order, and in the middle of all, it's possible that we will get a response, but we have the support.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anything else? Okay.
Let's go ahead and make a motion to your attorney. Do I have a second? Second. All in favor of your, let's say aye.
Aye.
Have a good night, everybody.